Hearing from the public this evening. And you've all heard, I think, a lot from staff in the past, and I didn't think it was really helpful at this point to be asking staff to reproduce what they've given us and given you over time. This is, what we've chosen to do, as you probably well know, is break what would be an extraordinarily long meeting into two meetings. So tonight is the public input element. Next week, in preview of what we're going to talk to staff about, with council about here, is going to be about a few other items, but predominantly about the council trying to digest and work through all of this town center recommendation that we're getting from staff, and as well as all of the public input that's coming in on that. So next week, next Monday night, will be a regular city council meeting, but unusual in the sense that we will not be having public input at that meeting. So tonight is your opportunity for verbal public input. Anytime between now and then is an opportunity for written public input, either of the snail mail variety or of the email variety. Of course, email's easier, and speaking at least for myself, up until an hour or two before meeting time, I'm still reading my email. So I suspect other council members are as well. So there certainly, this certainly is not your last chance to comment, but it is your last chance to formally comment at the podium. So with that, we are doing, as I mentioned earlier, things a bit differently. We are asking folks to sign in. I have a list, and there's a second list running back there. So if you wish to speak, I would ask that you sign in. It'll just give us a better sense of how we're moving through the evening. I will ask for anyone else who hasn't been signed up, if they'd like to speak at the end. So if you don't get signed up, it's not, it won't exclude you, but it'll just give you a little bit more control over where you are in the flow of things if you do sign up. Let's see, what else? Usual rules of engagement apply. Three minutes. Begin by introducing yourself and giving us your address. Complicated rules are on the back wall or on the back door, but they really just boil down to please be civil. And with that, I think we'll go ahead and launch into it. I may have forgotten something or another. Ally, are we up for those watching at home at this point, or is that?
We should be, uh, one camera until our videographer gets here.
Okay.
So it's one wide screen shot.
Okay. So hopefully those at home can watch. And I believe that it's being captured for posterity and for those who want to watch it on the web at a future date as well. Ally?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Okay. So with that, we're going to go ahead and launch, and as I say, I'll break out other comments along the way if I need to, but I think that's enough to get us started. So number one on the list I have in front of me is Dick Winslow. Bart Dawson will be on deck. Welcome, Dick.
Dick Winslow, 3761 Seventieth Ave., Southeast. It is difficult for me to stand here this evening for my three minutes, knowing that no matter what I and others say, you were going to vote, perhaps not unanimously, but close to unanimously, for the Joint Commission's Mercer Island Urbanization Plan. Your vote for the urbanization plan is actually surprising to me, because in the past couple of years, you have listened to Mercer Island public opinion and changed your approach on many different issues, such as the library, Kite Hill, and the massive mines project. And in fact, you, Mr. Mayor, worked hard to get us commuters bus number 630, which I really appreciate and thank you for. It has made a big difference for me and my commute. So I don't understand why, given all of these, you're going to vote against Mercer Island public opinion and for the urbanization plan. All I can do is assume that you're getting serious pressure from various sources, developers, big property owners, real estate owners, business people, and regional officials, who of course would be happy to see Mercer Island become more urbanized. At this late date, all I can do is remind you of why you, probably, moved here. Like the vast majority of Mercer Islanders, you moved here because you wanted a pleasant residential community, not because you wanted an urban, or perhaps vibrant, lifestyle. So I know that most of you, especially those of you that live on the north end, don't really want Mercer Island to become more urbanized. And you know in your hearts that most Mercer Islanders don't want that urbanization either. Most of us really do like buildings that are no more than two stories high. But despite all of this, you're going to vote for the Joint Commission's Mercer Island Urbanization Plan anyway. And your vote for major urbanization leaves me feeling very surprised and very, very disappointed.
Bart Dawson, followed by Tenley Tobin.
Yes, I'm Bart Dawson, 8812 Southeast Seventieth Place. I've written two statements to read tonight, and I'm not going to read either of them fully. I support the building height limit proposed by the Planning Commission. I believe that the 543 proposal is a good proposal. It's a good compromise. I am going to make a suggestion later on how it should be improved. I think the 543-plus proposal, really it's a 554 proposal, is really out of order. There's no written documents available for public review. It was done in a rush. Last time the council received something in a rush, the moratorium in December, you wisely decided you wanted to wait and do things in a more orderly fashion. That's what you should do. But there is a big loophole in the draft code that will not prevent some straight-up building facades that Islanders oppose, like Dick talked about. The draft comp plan is very clear about reducing the impact of straight-up tall buildings. Goal 3.4 says mitigate the canyon effect of straight building facades along streets through the use of upper-floor stepbacks, facade articulation, and similar techniques. The draft code contains a concept of an average daylight plane, which requires building floors above the second floor to be stepped back away from the street. Since the building plane is an average, the draft code also allows parts of the building to protrude above the building plane and grow straight up for three, four, or five floors from the edge of the sidewalk, just as the old code it allows. To compensate for the protrusion, other parts of the building must be pushed back from the edge of the sidewalk. And these parts of the building pushed back can also grow straight up three, four, or five stories, just like we see in the legacy building. Figure six in the draft code clearly explains this result, as does the left paragraph in figure 10. The bottom line for me is that this loophole in the draft unacceptably allows buildings to grow up citylike, straight three, four, five-story buildings. The problem is the draft code does not require that the third floor of any building be stepped back from the second floor. An example of the preferred stepback is shown on the right photograph in figure 12 of the draft code. Please remember that the most frequently mentioned phrases relating to the desired vision of town center were small town, small-town feel, or village feel. I believe that street-side two-story building facades provide that crucial small-town feel. Just give us a two-story building at the street. So my request is simple. Please require that the third floor of any building be stepped back X feet, 10 feet, from the second floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Tenley Tobin, followed by Robert Thorpe. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Tenley Allison Tobin, and address is 3024 Seventieth Avenue, Southeast. And I am a co-owner of the Islandia Center and a retired architect. The property owners of the Mercer Island Town Center are a minority in numbers. However, our voices need to be heard and given full and thorough consideration. Our property, specifically the Islandia Center, where Island Books is located, is included in the Town Center three zoning with three-story limits. Even though the zoning is currently three stories, there's a pocket of existing buildings around our property with four-story building heights that surround the Islandia Center. New Court to the west is four stories. Island House to the north is four stories, and the properties to the east have an elevation level of four stories. It would be logical and fair to allow the Islandia Center parcel to be zoned for greater stories and height requirements to ensure consistency with surrounding building heights. A three-story redevelopment will never be built on our property because the economics will never support it. I have feasibility studies and architectural massing studies to validate this statement. If a three-story project were to be built, it would be out of place visually when the surrounding buildings are at a higher four-story plane of sight. It only makes sense to rezone the Islandia parcel to a higher height requirement to be consistent with the other building heights in this tier of buildings. There has been tremendous effort, time, and money spent by a variety of city officials and advisors to ensure future development is executed in a well-thought-out manner. I applaud everyone for their efforts, and I too have similar hopes for a new comp plan that will serve the community in its best capacity. However, I feel a group of very local residents have captured the attention of the committees and the city council, and the property owners have not had a fair voice in this process. There is a lot of pressure placed upon the city council from the vocal group. However, it is your responsibility to lead with educated, data-based information, knowing the consequences of your decisions will not always please everyone, but will be the best decisions for the community at large. Status quo, no growth, is not a good solution for Mercer Island. Rather, redevelopment in a well-conceived manner will enhance the town center and provide many benefits to the community for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Thorpe, followed by John Hempelman. I'm sorry, I can't read the... Hempelman, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having the hearing this evening. I know you've been at this a long time. Again, I want to thank the panel for all their hard work. I think there was a lot of good work done in implementing the Growth Management Act. The Growth Management Act requires us to not just look at what public opinion is. They need to look at Albany, Euro Transit Center. What's the history of the community? So some facts. I'm speaking tonight, not only as a property owner since 1971 at West Mercer Way, but as what I consider an expert in urban design and land economics, because I teach those classes and practice that in my offices here on the Mercer Island. I did a little fact-finding. There are existing in the five-story in the R5 area, there are 22 projects, nine ownerships and 13 projects within those. Some of them are six stories, like the Island Office Park in Aloya. The rest are five. So you've already got those built. You have a hotel and another thing proposed in that area, filling out that area. Then as you move up the hill in the R4 zone, there are 16 buildings, of which two are five-story and only one is three-story. So two of those are going to be nonconforming. Then you have, if you move to what I call a donut hole, and that's the piece south of 28th, that starts with Dollar and goes to McDonald's and goes to King, there's been a lot of talk there, and the idea is maybe four plus one. I think that is really key, what you do with the King property. But then as we move south, you have a very interesting thing in the NC3. Island Office Retirement is four stories. Landmark Villa is five. New Court is four. Faber's Office Building is four or five, and the Caledonian Building is four. So you're going to go three. All of those are going to be legally nonconforming. They go to get bank financing, and they got a serious problem. People try to sell their condominiums and that. Are they going to have a problem selling them because the bank are going to say, "I'm sorry, we can't finance them." So we've dealt with that. Now we're going to move to the three, the four orphans. The four orphans are the properties that are left, that are in the NC zone. And somebody's already spoken about the bookstore. You have the King property, you have the Mercer Island Shopping Center, you have the bookstore, and you have Farmers, which is currently four or five stories. The others are one or two. You're going to isolate them out from everybody else, from the other 40 properties, and say, "We're going to treat them differently. We're going to treat them as a different class of citizens." And if you do that, then, as the master builders wrote you a letter, and every expert that spoke said, "You're never going to redevelop those properties. You're not going to get your structured parking. You're not going to get your plazas, and unless you do, the things are there." So my recommendation is have those have a bonus floor. Do the three to 10% open space. I think there was a real proposal for going higher with 10% structured parking, underground or affordable housing with a mix of mark rate rentals and condos, and green and laid approved and meets the Design Commission standards. So if you're going to implement the plan, only time otherwise, there's going to be a dead hand on those properties. Every expert has told you they will set their idle. They will continue to receive deferred maintenance and functional obsolescence, and I think your plan will not be implemented if you leave those four stepchildren out there on the end. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Hempelman, followed by Randy Banneker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Hempelman at 524 Second Avenue in Seattle. I'm a land use attorney, and I'm advising the downtown property owners. But maybe more important for this discussion tonight, I'm lucky enough to be the national chair of the Transit Oriented Development Council of the Urban Land Institute, which is our national think tank for best practices in real estate development. I'm going to urge you not to reduce the heights, as has been suggested by one of the reports you've received, but at the very least, to go with the proposed three-plus-one, four-plus-one bonus provisions. Why should you avoid reducing the heights? First of all, I think Bob Thorpe's comments are really pertinent. Almost all of the buildings in the areas he discussed are three, four, and five stories, some are six. There are just a few properties that are yet to be developed, so it would be, I think, unfair, ethically unfair, and potentially legally unfair to discriminate against those few remaining parcels by reducing the height. Secondly, there is a real concern in our business about creating nonconforming uses. And so if you reduce heights, you create nonconforming uses, and that creates multiple problems for redevelopment, for replacement, for financing. But I think a more pertinent argument why you should not reduce heights is because it will interfere with what most people, and I think probably all of you, want. You want walkable, mixed-income, mixed-use communities. We need to have a place for our grandchildren and our grandparents. And what we know is in the half-mile walkable area around high-capacity transit stations, something we call transit-oriented development, particularly in a place like Mercer Island where it's flat, that half-mile can be very walkable, but to get the walkable feel that you want, to get the open space, to get the underground parking, and to get the mixed income with affordable housing, you have to have those bonus provisions. I heard experts briefing your Planning and Design Commission, and they said, "Without the height, you'll never get the bonuses." So if you want the walkable, mixed-income community, then you need to have the height with the bonuses that will give you those amenities. We'll leave you with this. I've had the opportunity to look at and work on transit-oriented projects all over America over the last five years. Every city that has developed TOD, that has put in new heavy rail and light rail lines, have upzoned their station areas. I cannot give you one example of any city or town in America that is downzoned within the half-mile around a new light rail or heavy rail station. We certainly don't want that precedent set here. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Banneker, followed by Larry Surchin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. My name's Randy Banneker. I'm here on behalf of the Seattle King County Realtors. I'd like to encourage you to consider heights with an overlying thought, which is the need for housing. Our region is experiencing a housing supply crisis. Job growth has exceeded housing growth, resulting in double-digit year-over-year housing price increases and a shrinking number of homes sold. The inventory of homes for sale is less than half of what we'd consider to be a balanced marketplace. And it's been front-page news over the past several weeks, and taking several kicks at the can on that very issue. Now, naturally, you need to do what's best for Mercer Island, but I also encourage you to think about Mercer Island's role in the larger region, because it's connected. We're all connected. This last year was the 25th anniversary of the Growth Management Act, and in the early 1990s, our region was poised to sprawl in ways that would have compromised our rural and resource lands. Instead, we passed the Growth Management Act to protect those lands by agreeing to direct jobs and housing into urban areas. Much has been done, much has been accomplished, and many communities and neighborhoods have become more vibrant and exciting and livable and walkable as a result. But more needs to be done to accommodate the demand for housing. The bargain of protecting rural lands and avoiding sprawl hinges on our region's willingness to zone in such a manner that allows to zone in such a manner that allows folks who work in King County to live in King County. Opportunities to increase multifamily housing in neighborhoods like Town Center can help meet the need for housing while protecting your legacy single-family neighborhoods and maintaining Mercer Island's high quality of life. A home is where a job goes at night. A region full of jobs is a great problem to have, but the lack of housing is a problem that harms us all. The further the home is from the job, the more everyone's lives are spent in traffic congestion. Longer range, you have to wonder about the effect on employers' decisions about expanding or moving into a region with very few housing options for employees. Now, the median-priced home countywide is nearly half a million dollars. That begins to get untenable for many, certainly entry, but middle-range households. Better balancing jobs and housing will yield solutions, and the outcomes need not be disagreeable. The sort of housing choices created by greater multifamily density can offer options for empty nesters who want to remain on the island without the responsibilities of a larger house, or options for younger people setting out on their professional lives. We encourage you to take advantage of the many opportunities at Town Center for Mercer Island and for the region. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Sargent followed by Ben Anderson.
Hello there. Good evening. Thanks to council members for listening to us. I'm here representing Save Our Suburbs and Islanders for Responsible Growth, and I think we've heard several people characterize our organization as anti-everything, anti-growth, anti-MICA, anti-Parks Initiative. First of all, let me say we have nothing to do with the Parks Initiative or with MICA, either one or the other. You can put those pitchforks away. As far as being a small vocal group, I have a petition here that we put on change.org just two weeks ago. So, as far as this morning, 648 of your neighbors voted, and the petition asked for no more than three stories south of 27th. I guess that corresponds to Alternative C in the Planning Commission Plan. I've got those petitions and 200 comments right here, and I'd be happy to give those to you at this point.
Yeah, if you could just hand them to the clerk, that'd be great.
Okay. You can hand them. Take a look at them while you're here?
So, what the petition says is that, "We, the undersigned residents of Mercer Island, favor a low-profile Town Center that protects our small-town feeling and our quality of life. We do not oppose growth. We only ask to be thoughtful, responsible growth, in keeping with the character of our suburban, small town, and is consistent with what we desire aesthetically and functionally for our Town Center. Creating urban-style, high-residential density in our Town Center is not in the best interest of Mercer Island residents, and it provides few, if any, benefits for islanders and results in many downsides. For all these reasons, we urge the city council to enact a development code that caps Town Center building heights at two or three stories south of 27th Street." The overwhelming comments we got, there are over 200 there, that four- and five-stories give us no benefit, increase traffic, overcrow their schools, will eventually result in higher utility costs and more expense to the city, and fire protection and police that taxpayers will eventually have to pay. There's also an issue, Mercer Island has no ladder trucks to get to a five-story, and certainly can't reach the top of that heavily-developed, which is over seven stories at the northeast corner. So, what happens if it's Rush Hour, or God forbid, there's an earthquake, and they have to get to the top of that building? It took me 20 minutes to get, just from four or five, to get to here, just today, this afternoon at 4:30. So, who's planned for that? I haven't seen anything happen in the plans. So, the problem is, some of the developers, most of them don't live here. They make promises of significant amenities, such as public courtyards and beautiful gardens you can walk through, and a walkable Town Center and transit-oriented density. And what we get is locked courtyards that you can't get through, you can't walk through them, or a little corner of statue. So, I urge the council to listen to 628 islanders so far, 20 of those people were from off-island, and consider the Alternative C, three and two stories south of 27th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ben Anderson followed by Mike Gates.
Hi. My name is Ben Anderson. I live at 8750 North Mercer Way. I'm going to speak on behalf of three different issues. One is the creation of some type of Town Center or public square that, of appropriate human-scale architecture that helps create this feeling that we're talking about. I would like to ask how the committee is going to address how this public open space becomes a real public amenity, which is referenced in Mr. Grass's recent email, and I'd like to reference the question of parking in schools. Darren Grass sent out an email day before yesterday, which I read in detail. Thank you for doing so. I appreciate your putting together the information. There actually were parts that I found alarming. One part was that, in terms of this building height, what you said in your email to us was that, with these new heights, actually, there are a number of places that are going, it was five-story, but now it's four-story. But that's not a real difference, because there are no five-story buildings in this location. So, actually, all of the description is for building up from what we have now. And I'm terribly concerned that we are going to lose these public amenities that we, everyone here seems to agree is important. The descriptions of how public amenities, we talk about space, there's a description about how we're going to, every 140-square-foot-floor building would have 4,200 square feet, this is 3% of their space. There's no description of, and how would that be allotted in a way that would be a true public amenity? I think everyone can go to our current space and see, so far, we've done poorly. There is no Town Center. There's no feeling of a space that we would all like to go to. I'm concerned about the landscaping being inadequate. There was the discussion of how this could be done with green roofs and green walls, which I don't know how a green roof helps me down at the sidewalk. I'm concerned we're going to get a bunch of wide sidewalks, but it's going to be essentially unchanged, and it's really in your hands as to how to manage this. I was concerned to hear that the parking spaces are being decreased because of a recommendation from a different, a recent report that you received. Parking is a terrible problem. Anyone who tries to work here and go shopping, it's terrible. So, I don't see how the outcomes are really going to be achieved. I listened to the people who presented here today, and what I'm struck by is that the strongest voices in favor of building up are people who have financial interests, most, many of whom are not from our community. And I respect their needs. Yes, we need real business development. We get that, but it does need to be thinking 20 years down the road. People who are not going to be here 20 years from now, because this is not their location, we should listen to their opinions and then develop it as is best for our community. Finally, I was particularly struck by a recent email from Mike Searle, who formerly was on this council, who said that the comments that we must address our affordable housing issues, he stated, and was previously one of you, that this is not a real issue, this is a series of zoning questions, and that it's being used to bait the community. I'm hoping that's not true. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Mike Gates followed by Tom King.
Good evening, council members. Mike Gates, I live at 2875th Place Southeast, number 203, at so condominium facility that just sits a little bit above and looks down at the Hyde Building, which is one of the ugliest things I've ever seen. In fact, it's not just seven stories. On top of that, there's this great big white thing. It's about two stories itself, so we've got about nine stories in all. But how that happened, I can't imagine. I wasn't here at the time when it really came through. We've lived here since about 2010, and daily, when I'm going down 27th Street, I'm encountering traffic problems almost at any time. So, I think that you ought to take a good, hard look at your traffic engineer, who gave that a go. Must have been an okay to build that, in spite of the traffic congestion that that will cause, because I understand there's about 200 parking places in that, so we'll have more cars coming in and out. I spoke at the hearing that you had on the Heinz Building. I wrote an email on that, I'll refer you to that, that's probably better organized and more articulated about my objections. But I just don't understand, because I look at you as stewards to protect the nature and character of Mercer Island. And you know something? I don't care if we have a whole lot of other people move in here. We have a character that we should preserve here, and you can't preserve that when you're allowing more and more traffic to come here, and more and more people that are going to require more and more schools, and they're not paying the property taxes that homeowners are. And as I understand it, one of the rationales for this rush to increase density under that Growth Management Act, when I read that the last time, I understand that you're supposed to accept a density within 20 years, I think from 2006, I think it was, that was something like 2,300 units. And by my calculations, you've already approached about two-thirds of that, and you've got about 10 years to go. So, I think that's, and the requirement is, is that you don't have to have those units built. The requirement is that you have to have a plan to do it. So, obviously, we can have a plan, but we don't have to build all 2,300 or 2,400 units to do that. So, I'm opposed... Ooh, I'm out of time. Just getting warmed up. No, I'm done. Anyway, to put four- and five-story buildings in Town Center way that I'm going to be looking down on is going to be a disaster.
Thank you very much. Tom King, and that ends this list I have. So, Ally, if you could set me up with the next one, that'd be great.
Hi, Tom King, 4117 83rd Avenue Southeast. Also, some of my family's here, owner of the King property. I wanted to speak in favor of a minimum of four-plus-one option, south of 27th. We had already designed a building with a significant public plaza, it was 18,000 square feet, mid-block cut through, everything looked good. I guess we missed affordable housing, the sidewalks were wider. Not allowing four-plus-one is not financially viable to develop the property, and our property's going to sit there as two stories for the next 50 years. And we've got that option. So, if you don't vote in favor of the four-plus-one, we will have 50 years of our building. And by the way, Avalino is southwest and they're five stories.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next up, sorry, no advance notice, John Houlihan, then followed by Leon Cohen.
Thank you. Good evening. John Houlihan, on behalf of Dollar Development, 2737 78th Avenue Southeast. I don't live on Mercer Island, but as you know, I've been here enough over the last two years that I think you could probably tax me for being here. I'd like to speak on three topics tonight on the Town Center Plan. One is height, the other is pedestrian connections, and then a fairly focused legal issue about the covenants that you're going to be in the draft code that are required for pedestrian connections and open plazas. On the height, I think we would favor the five-four-three-plus-one plan. It's fair. It allows the property owners to maintain essentially their current height, and it also allows development to occur, which will actually deliver the public amenities that you hear so many people clamoring for in your public hearings and in the comments that have been submitted. I monitored the Planning Commission and Development Commission proceedings, and the three stories, one of your Design Commission members specifically said, he understands that three stories will result in all of those properties not being developed in the foreseeable future. And I don't think that's fair to those property owners. They should have an opportunity to develop their properties to their highest and best use. It also prevents those properties from becoming non-conforming uses, which create difficulties for financing, retenanting, and even the sale of those properties. The Balkan mass concerns from higher buildings are addressed through the daylight plan, the additional sidewalk setbacks, and the facade modulations that were heavily debated during the Planning and Design Commission discussions. With respect to the pedestrian connections, the required 20-foot width has a significant impact on our proposed hotel development on the former Travelodge site. We believe that it is unfair to require the first to develop to have the entire 20-foot width on their property. We believe a more equitable approach would be allowed to have that 20-foot width shared among the abutting property owners. Our property already is designed with a hotel that has been forestalled by the moratorium. It's designed with a pedestrian connection and a public plaza. We believe that it would be fair to allow us to proceed with that development with those dimensions, and you can have the code provide the Design Commission some additional flexibility on the width of those public pass-throughs, so that you can combine them with a public open space, so that it makes a good design option and solution for that particular piece of property. With respect to the recorded covenants that are required for public plazas and pedestrian pass-throughs, as currently drafted, I believe the code is unconstitutional. It requires that those covenants remain in place even after the building for which they were traded is demolished. I don't believe that's an appropriate use of your authority and violates eminent domain. Essentially, you're taking that property without paying fair market value for it. Thank you for your opportunities to speak this evening, and again, we're available at your convenience to discuss our project, our thoughts on the code, and how we can develop a Town Center code that is fair and equitable for the property owners and also actually delivers the public amenities that your constituents are looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Leon Cohen followed by Bruce Loig.
Good evening. I want to thank you for the efforts that you've put for over a year. It's been a long haul, and I think people should be commended, the commissions and the council as well. My only concern that I have right now is that I think there's some lots that are unusual size and shape, and I don't know the consideration that's been given to them, and I'd really appreciate it if you could look at that. That's in all three of the areas. So, if they're awkward shape, unusual shape, or under 20,000 feet, I believe that was what was looked at. If you look at that, I'd very much appreciate it. Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Loig followed by Roberto Lewandowski.
Hi. I'm Bruce Loig. I've 12 over Green Rain in Mercer Island. I am a resident. I am a developer, but I am not developing, I never have developed, and will not develop on the island. I have a number of comments about things. I think there are a number of things in the recommended code that are either almost impossible or are impossible to implement, and I think we ought to take them out and make sure that this thing actually works for somebody. One of the issues, I think, that you ought to think about in terms of shared parking, I'm not sure that I can read the shared parking agreement particularly well, but I think you need to understand that shared parking, there's talk about having a two-hour gap between leases. Well, that's not the way parking works. I mean, parking, people come in to park, there's a maximum, and then it trails off. It's a sine curve effectively, and you can have different leases, you can have two different leases in your parking garage at the same time when they're not at their peak. So, you need to think about timing, and particularly, what about evenings? You know, do you have availability? There are also the question of what about on-street parking? And who gets to use the on-street parking, and how does that work? Anyway, there are a number of issues, and I think it would be well, I would be happy to sit down with somebody, but I can't, I really can't make substantial recommendations without knowing what the intent is. I mean, what is it you're trying to get at? And so, then you can do something about it, then you can figure out a solution to it. But most of these things, I'm not sure that I can figure out exactly what the intent is. Anyway, I'd be happy to help if you'd like my help in that, but it's going to take some time, I think, for people to sit down and actually get together and figure out how to make what you're proposing work better. And as you... Anyway, I'd be happy to help, uh, if you'd like my help in that, but it's gonna take some time, I think, for people to sit down and actually, um, get together and figure out how to, how to make what you're proposing work better. And as you all know, there's some controversy about whether we ought to have an urban downtown or suburban downtown. And dividing it in half and having a half-suburban and half-urban doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. But, but I think, uh, that's, that's an issue that, that perhaps, perhaps takes a vote. I mean, there are a lot of people on both sides of this thing. Anyway, uh, if I could be helpful, I would like to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Roberta Lewandowski, followed by Sarah Lee Kane.
Hello, I'm Roberta Lewandowski, 474086th Avenue Southeast. I've lived here, um, over 30 years, and, um, as Dick said, think back about why you came here. I liked a lot about Mercer Island when I came here, but the business district was not one of the things I liked. In those days, you had to walk across the surface freeway to get to Luther Burbank Park, which was run by the county, it was very rundown. Um, things have gotten better. Transportation's better for me. I can take the bus to Bellevue, the airport, and, um, and Seattle, way better than before when you had to drive everywhere. That was really your only choice. So I generally agree with the Planning Commission, Design Commission proposal. I think it's clarified a lot of design issues. It's not like, what do you think about sidewalk width? It's clear what kind of sidewalks Mercer Island is going to want. It's clear what the building should look like, and I think the design will be better. I generally prefer the taller buildings, like 77 Central, not the big one that's under construction now, but, um, the Town Center one across from, uh, QFC. And I like what you get from the big buildings. We've got better sidewalks because they develop, redeveloped. We get some affordable housing. We get rid of the surface parking lots, which, if you're walking around the business district, it's a pain to cross all those surface parking lots to get to the store you wanna go to. So I like the lead requirements that are put in this proposal. I like the affordable housing requirements, and I hope you keep those in. I've heard technical issues today from a lot of the prop owners or developers that have spoken, and I hope the staff works through those and make sure we get what we want and not just have a requirement that isn't going to work. But, um, I'm also concerned about, the proposal says it will have less capacity for housing, and I think that's a guess, because you don't know what, whether it's gonna, in the mixed-use districts, is it gonna go housing? Is it going to go office? And when you look at the comprehensive plan documents, it looks like we have way more employment capacity than we need and not enough housing capacity, so that's something you could look at. To say, well, if we get too much office, we're not gonna meet our housing targets, and we won't get our affordable housing. So generally, I think it's a good proposal. I hope you take it seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Lee Kane, followed by Husam Gaziyoglu.
Hi, um, uh, my name is Sarah Lee Kane. I live at 4816 West Mercer Way. It's very interesting today for me to hear the variety of comments. I'm very happy I came, if for no other reason. Um, you know, and I, I can begin to understand, because I couldn't before, how, um, the council could have any other views but mine. But now I understand about some of the pressures and some of the ideas that you are receiving and hearing, and obviously, um, you know, have to evaluate. So, um, yeah, I'm gonna share that. Um, you know, the thing I also wanna, there's a lot of issues I'd like to share very quickly, so I'm gonna speak a little fast now. Um, you know, traditional strategies for development in the world and growth, bigger, more, more dense, higher, are currently being reevaluated for many different sectors, as everyone knows here, including the sustainability movement, with an emphasis on community health and the environment. I haven't heard too much about community health or the environment tonight, although I know everyone is very well aware of these things. I've lived in South America, I've lived in Africa, I've lived in Switzerland, and I've been in the United States, throughout the United States, and I've been in Mercer Island now for 17 years, and I've traveled throughout the world. Almost every community, every town, every city, which has developed for higher density, increased height, and economic growth, without retaining what is unique about the character of its quote "place," has invariably regretted the loss of its character, its identity. You know, you can't go back. You've lost, and then it's gone. So what is the nature of identity with the kind of plan that you have in front of you and that you have prepared? It's same, same, same. It's what we see in Seattle, it's what we see in Bellevue. In my mind, it's boring, boring, boring. And people aren't gonna wanna come here. Do you ever have any friends who say, hey, let's have some fun today and take a walk in Bellevue? I haven't heard anyone say that recently. And you know why? Because they've developed like crazy. Mercer Island has its own identity and its own feel and its character. And I interviewed over 100 people in the past week on the street. I did a random survey of every adult that I came across near the post office. And invariably, a wide majority wanted lower density, and they want it fixed at two to three stories below 27th. You know that. You've heard the comments in person, you've seen them written, you've heard about the petitions, you're well aware. And tonight, I've heard the other side. So, you know, you know what the community feels. Now, in the proposal that I read about, in that 5-4-3 plan, if that's where we're going, I drove around, I walked around. There's a very clear demarcation at 28th Street. Whatever you do, if you decide to go 5-4-3, don't make it at 28th, I mean, at 29th Street, there's a clear demarcation. Uh, I'm sorry, 27th, 28th Street, whatever you do, don't make it further down. You'll have a tiny Town Center. The three-story idea in Plan D is tiny. Walk around and feel it. It means nothing.
And I'll ask you to wrap up if you would.
Thank you.
Thank you. Husam Gaziyoglu, followed by Scott Kuznicki.
Hello, Husam. My name is Husam Gaziyoglu, 4610 East Mercer Way. My comment tonight is gonna be different than the rest of the comments, because I'm gonna talk about a mat learning center that I'm starting on Mercer Island. Um, I have the franchise already purchased, but I'm having difficulty finding a location. And it's not that there are no locations, there are locations, and I already have made deals with the landlord, and then we come to the city, and then get told that's not a permitted use, because there are, um, 40%, 6% usage cap limits on the ground floor usage within the Town Center, uh, as defined today. I, I looked at the latest, um, uh, guideline on development, um, development and design guideline, April 14th issue, I believe is the latest one. And, uh, there, it is simplified from what it was before, so it's going in the right direction. However, a new concept has been introduced and referred to as retail street frontages. And, uh, but this is not really well-defined. When I talk, can I talk to the city staff here? Their interpretation is more stricter than what it was before. Like, if you take the, uh, example of Island Square, that has four sides, 27th, is between 27th and 28th Streets, and between 78th and 80th Avenues, uh, the interpretation of those wording now by city staff appears to be, uh, 40%, 60% cap applies to 27th Street, a frontage of Island Square, which is like four spaces. Uh, same, you know, will apply to two or three spaces on the, uh, on 78th Avenue. Like, they, they would treat each frontage as a standalone and apply these percentages, which, with small numbers like that, these percentages don't make sense at all. Uh, so we, I have two asks. First ask, if possible, get rid of these, uh, these usage, the proper wording is, uh, required ground floor uses, because these really set artificial limits on, uh, even though it's well-intended, goes probably with your vision of what the downtown should look like, but it does put artificial limits, uh, that don't correspond to reality. So I, I can now, very easy, open another nail salon or a pizza restaurant, seriously. But I cannot use those spaces for a mat learning center, which I would submit that most families would need that. That's why I'm doing it, because I saw a lack of it with my own children.
And I'll ask you to wrap up.
Okay. And if that's not possible, then my second ask is, define what the frontage is, so different people don't interpret it differently. And I would propose that, um, it should perhaps apply to the whole street, like all 27th Street spaces should have that limitation. Um, that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Scott Kuznicki, followed by Robert Medved.
Good evening, Scott Kuznicki, 7650 Southeast 27th Street, Mercer Island. First of all, I'd like to thank the City Council for being here this evening and for hearing the comments of the public. I also wanna thank the Joint Commission for their work. Having served on the Design Commission for five years, I know that there are a lot of long nights involved in getting these things put together. And I'm predating a lot of what I'm saying on a very comprehensive update I received in an email from a City Council member who may wanna remain unnamed in case I say anything inaccurate. Um, but what I'm here to do this evening is to speak to you as a traffic engineer, but ask you to think creatively with your mind's eye for a moment. Stand on the north side of 27th Street, between 77th Avenue and 78th Avenue, across from the Walgreens. Look down south down the Town Center, and think of what you see. You don't see tall buildings. You see some on the left, but you see a hillside on the right. Um, you see a lot of apartment buildings. You see trees. You can, you can visually feel like you're not in the center of someplace extremely urban. And if we think about some of the greatest cities in the world, and we look at especially the European experience, we see that density is not necessarily reserved for the center of the city. And what we have now, and some have spoken about this already, is we have a unique character, something that I want to preserve here on this island. When I am in the Town Center, I don't wanna be surrounded by tall buildings. I wanna be able to stand and look over the roof of the Walgreens and see trees. When my lovely wife was here this evening, and I go for walks in the evening, we sometimes feel like we're transported to coastal Italy, maybe somewhere in Turkey, someplace where we can look across and say, wow, look at that, there's no tall buildings in our way. Um, we've maybe hiked up one flight of stairs, and we can see all of the lights spread out across the way. So I'm here to urge the City Council to consider three things this evening. Number one, I urge you to consider not just something as simple as a 5-4-3 plan, but perhaps preserving what I'll call a view shed for people who live, work, and visit the Town Center, because what we have now is very valuable. Uh, it creates a sense of place. I'm also asking the City Council to significant, put significant effort into considering how we can achieve the GMA objectives of concurrency. Uh, our current transportation improvement plan, and as far as I know, the items involved in this proposal do not address the concurrency issues related to transportation infrastructure improvements. Uh, if proposed development occurs, traffic congestion will be the result. Air quality will suffer. And if we don't think about more modern intersections like roundabouts in the Town Center, we're going to start to see the safety of our pedestrians and bicyclists suffer in the Town Center. So I certainly wanna urge you to think about that as well. I also wanna urge the council to address the issues that were raised concerning 77th Avenue Southeast and the elimination of parking. I can't help but imagine that the on-street parking will help make up for the lack of off-street parking that will occur as we change the parking requirements. Um, and while that may create more urbanist space, it also creates issues, because removing the bicycle lanes on 77th Avenue Southeast doesn't necessarily promote our goal of producing , uh, travel options for all users in our city. Thank you for hearing my comments. Good evening.
Thank you. Next up, Robert Medved, and he's the last one on this list, so.
Good evening. Bob Medved, 7238 Southeast 32nd Street, Mercer Island. Uh, first, I wanna thank everybody, uh, obviously a lot of time put in this thing in the last year, year and a half. But I wanna especially thank, uh, the Joint Committee, who had, I believe, a subcommittee, and I wanna thank that subcommittee. I don't know who was on it, but I think we finally came up with softening the buildings a little bit with setbacks, whatever you wanna call them, modulation, what have you. And I just suspect that whoever was on it, they had an architect or two, because you can see, uh, I think, some very, very good influence there. So I wanna talk about more global things. Um, uh, one of the things I think is lacking, since that gentleman just talked, I pick him up, I haven't seen, and there may be, you know, a cumulative transportation impact study done, you know, say, we built this thing out, what's it gonna look like, what's the traffic, what have you? I haven't seen it. There may be one, you know, individual, you know, I can tell you, project by project, I can get you a traffic study that will say pretty much, this is okay, blah, 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 whatever. Uh, you need to do a cumulative view of what's that, assuming a full build-out. Um, and the last point I wanna make, any code you have, I think the code we have now could have been implemented in a better way, and we would've had different buildings, because there is language in there, from a lawyer's standpoint at least, where we could've had some of this modulation, whatever, we could've had better amenity, used to get the height, et cetera, et cetera. So implementation is key. And what we put in here is gonna be how it's gonna be implemented. And one of the difficulties that I have, and this is not a personal attack on anybody, but there's too much discretion in the code official. Okay? And just, if you just go through the matrix now, the code official can pretty much unanimously eliminate short plats, deviations, critical determinations, CPO threshold determinations, and a lot of the parking requirements and that sort of thing. Uh, I don't care who is in that position, there's not enough checks and balances. I mean, that should be, it's some sort of committee, so they can at least discuss it. Yeah, that's good, bad, and what have you. So I think that's very, very important. They also have, the code official does code interpretation. I don't know why that doesn't, do not in the jurisdiction of the city attorney. We've got a very good city attorney. And code interpretation is a legal issue. Believe me, it's a legal issue. As well-intended, as planners are, they're not lawyers. And I would just ask you to look at the case. It's called Fading Point Neighbors versus City Mercer Island. Some of you are probably familiar with it. 102 Washington App, 775. In there, they made two arguments, uh, city got reversed, tried to put too much on a, on a building lot, and it's only take a second. And the arguments made, well, the Growth Management Act made us do this, court rejected that out of hand. Second one was, well, we've been serving that way for six years, so this must be the right way. Very strong language in a court's opinion, it said, no, just because you have misinterpreted your code, doesn't make your interpretation right. Reverse it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Tom Acker, followed by Cyril Baumgutner.
Hello, everyone. I don't know actually what we're voting on or what we're speaking to, because I haven't ever seen a final product, and that's a little bit concerning to me. There are so many hanging chads out there that I think that I, I can't really present. And I really hope that whatever, um, ideas you come up with, the community has an option to come back and talk to it. I'm here not because I'm a billionaire and not because I'm a, a special interest. I hear what they're saying, but if I had my druthers, we'd freeze it at the basic building height that our code currently allows at two stories until we sort out this mess. And it is a mess. So my recommendation is, if you can't support the citizen option, option C, then let's freeze it at two stories, which is our basic building height, get rid of the variances, and move on from there. Secondly, vibrancy is coming without height and without density. New seasons is moving in. That's gonna shift the balance of our community. Pagliacci's is coming in, maybe a mockery in a bakery, and there's another project somebody contacted me on. Sushi Jawa's making a, an investment. There's remodeling. This chart, see the red sliver on this chart? You know what that represents? Developers and special interests. I have nothing against them. You've had over 1,000 comments. There are 684 on the petition, uh, petition today, and 300 that were quoted as being sent to the council earlier. 98% of them, 99% of them now, are in favor of two stories south of 27th. You have an obligation to represent the community. I don't mean that in a threatening way, because I feel like we're threatened on the backside. When, when we hear things like, we need an inoculation strategy to protect us from bigger development, or you hear things like, we won't develop our property for 50 years, and you know, you know, you know, it's not my issue. Our issue is protecting the values of our community, and I'm not certain that this council's ready to do that. I really hope you are. And Benson, I really want you to push back on the Growth Management Act, like you said you would at the planning session in January. That is important. We don't have to build. This is a choice that we have to make. When I went out to Bainbridge Island and Redmond and another town over the last three weeks and interviewed them, they said, we keep it small because we value our values. Our kids get out of Dodge at 18. They don't even wanna stay here. They don't even want to stay here, but ironically, they move back when they turn 40. That's what we want. We don't care about height and density. So, and the gentleman that talked about TOD and density and southeast, or as a way to get what we want, try going down to Southeast Yell. I just moved here from there. Empty storefronts, non-affordable housing, businesses going out of business, and people are trapped in their homes. So anyways, the research that your own consultant provided, Adju, said that there is no real case for density and height. There's legitimate infrastructure issues that have been raised on next door. And I would just close with saying that we don't need to be like Dr. Seuss's Star-Bellied Sneetches. We can support our community and our values. This is about our community, not those who want to exploit our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cyril Baumgartner? You'll be the last person on this list.
I've just got one more name, Bonnie Godford.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Sir Baumgartner here, 4851 90th Place Southeast, 37 years. You folks have already seen what I wrote, what I'm going to deliver. This is to share it with the rest of the audience. Please reserve our village aura. No more than two stories. A Mercer Island landowner recently informed me, the value of the land justifies more than two stories. It also generates a revenue stream, which is unearned income, of which capital accumulates. There is no risk for the landowner or his banker. Land is a natural resource, just like the air we breathe. At some point, some enterprising young visionary stake out a plot of land and put his name on it. Thus began the real estate industry, and the rent, the capital and the wealth that accumulates from it. Rent pays interest to the banker and property management fees. Any revenue above that goes to the landowner. It's an unearned revenue stream which reserves preferential taxation. John Stuart Mill once wrote, John Stuart Mill, the British economist and philosopher, "The great landowners get rich while they sleep." Should not a portion of the grant go to the city, which pays for the maintenance and invests in the roads, streets, bridges, and utilities that render value to the land? Asked about a land tax, Adam Smith says, "Nothing could be more reasonable." When's the Churchill? "The landlord contributes absolutely nothing to the process of his enrichment, from which his enrichment is derived." Our tax system treats increases in the land as decreases. Again, it treats increases as decreases. You know about depreciation. Landowners are a beneficiary of capital gains. These preferences allow them to become wealthy. It's a great system for the landowners and unlikely to change. It also drives the development of our so-called town center. The system also allows for advice of consent. I'm advocating for a village aura with a two-story limit on buildings. I hope this makes your advice and consent a little easier and less difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. So folks, general policy, no applause, no boos, if we could. So Bonnie Godford?
Bonnie Godford, and then after that is Jim Gregson.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. Bonnie Godford, 2920 74th Avenue Southeast. I have a vision. I looked at the proposals by both the Planning and the Design Committee, and I stood at the yogurt shop and looked south. And I think we will have a town center that will not be a town. It will be a very dense residential neighborhood. There will not be restaurants, shops, maybe nail salon. But when I go to downtown Mercer Island to shop, I look at all the small businesses that will be gone if they are forced to move into, or actually unable to move into, the apartments. When I first moved to Mercer Island, I thought, how unfortunate that the town center isn't on the water like Kirkland. It's lovely. Now I think, how unfortunate that our town center is next to I-90 and Light Rail. I gather that it is going to be strictly residential. Mercer Island will be a bedroom community, even more so than now, and we will not have a community. So I ask you please to consider two-story. Go sit at the yogurt shop and look south, and envision these buildings. Maybe not the Hadley, but some of the other ones that are already built. And what are you going to get? A whole panel of apartment buildings, maybe some condos. So please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jim, I didn't catch the last name, but.
Gregson, thank you. Jim Gregson, 8540 Southeast 78th Street. I haven't been following this, really. I don't know much about city politics. We moved to the island seven or eight years ago, and I guess I kind of opened my eyes when the emails started coming out about the Heinz project. And, you know, seven-story building, I looked at, for example, oh, I don't even know the names of the buildings, but hanging over five or six stories kind of jumps out at you as being, in my opinion, an eyesore. So from that standpoint, I started thinking about this and started asking around, what do you guys think? Talking to the Y Guides group, talking to, you know, my kids' parents at school, talking to friends at the beach club, and just poking around, saying, what do you think of the development going on in downtown Mercer Island? And gosh, I can't find a single person who says, I love it. I want another seven-story building with mixed use down below and an impossible-to-navigate parking garage, and a, you know, contrast, contrast the Roanoke to the Islander. The Roanoke has a neat, small-town feel. You can always find someone there you know. No disrespect to the Islander, it has a much different feel. It feels like Bellevue. So, from my perspective, I was really curious to come here tonight and see who is supportive of the development project downtown. And it seems relatively clear to me, people who have property, people who own property in downtown Mercer Island, want to build downtown Mercer Island. I would ask that you represent us, the people here who live in the community, who moved here for kind of a very special reason. Thank you.
Thank you. So that marks the end of the list we have at this point. And can I just give a show of hands for others who care to speak, who, I've got just one here, anyone else? Two, three, okay. So let's work through those, and then we'll see where we are. So Gary? Go ahead.
Gary Robinson, 6026 East Mercer Way, resident for 38 years. Two sons, four grandsons, they all live on the island. You know, I listened to everything here tonight, and everyone speaks about what they think is best for Mercer Island. The question is, what is Mercer Island, or who is Mercer Island? Is it the citizens that are speaking to you tonight, and thank you for this opportunity? Is it the developers who have also spoken to you? Or is it you, the Council, that has your own vision of what you want to happen? You know, it's a question, and I ask you. I watched as you put together the two committees that worked on this and so forth, and I honestly thought you stacked the deck with them. You stacked the deck to get the results you wanted. I have no idea why you want that result, but that seemed to be the way that it was going. I would ask you if you really have all the data you need to make this decision. I noted in the survey that there are two issues that are dividing this community, and you elected not to put either one of them on the survey. A golden opportunity to understand from a random survey what Mercer Islanders think. And I ask you, are you really representing Mercer Islanders? Or do you have your own vision of what you want here? Is this your sandbox in which you want to play? We would like it that you would listen to us, the community, and what we would like Mercer Island to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Ira?
Ira Appleman, 4436 Ferncroft Road. I've been a resident for 53 years. Why are we here? The reason why we're here, the Council in the summer of 2014 had already decided all this. And the reason we're here is because Islanders were shocked. They were shocked at what was happening in the town center with the five-story buildings, and they were shocked that the Council wasn't reversing them. I've been to all the meetings, all of the stakeholder meetings for the last, maybe year and a half almost, all of the Joint Commission hearings. The only people who are for the higher buildings are the owners, developers, and their hirelings. And it's all about money. It has nothing to do with this community, making a community that people want to live in. It's all about money. And the consultants have said that we're not going to get the fantasy of all these nice shops like, I don't know, Carmel or something like that, that nothing like that is going to happen with a population of 23,000 people. We need a population of 120,000 people to get there. So none of that is going to happen. You have a petition that's been given to you that is 6 to 700. Signers, nothing like that is on the other side. It's a few people who are owners, developers, and their hirelings who are going to make money. If you wanted to have a vote, as one of the developers said, this thing of higher density and higher heights would go down in flames. What all the development community is worried about, they are terrified of diversity. Mercer Island is different from the rest of this area, and that's why we moved here. And wouldn't it be great if the island was the only community that downsized, that downzoned when transit was coming here? There would be nothing wrong with that. Now, they always, they talk about that the public wants all these public amenities, like the cement courtyards. That is not true. We have not heard that. What the public wants is a small-town feel, lower heights, lower density. That's all that they've really wanted, and all these other so-called amenities are the excuses that the Joint Commission and others and the development community have been trying to give us as a replacement for what we really want. Alternative C is a compromise. Most people want two or three floors everywhere. Alternative C was five floors north of 27th and three, a maximum of three, south of 27th. That is a compromise, and that's the only thing, that's almost too much, but that's the only thing that should be accepted.
Thank you. And ma'am?
Hi, my name is Darcy Guyer. I live at 9430 Southeast 52nd Street, so kind of middle of the island. I'm a single mom. I work here on the island, I do have clients. I'm an insurance broker. And I'm actually here, this is my first time, I kind of wanted to get a feeling, and I apologize for being late, and how many people have had dinner on the north end of Mercer Island last week? They actually sat down for a meal? Just this way? How many people have, like, at least once a week, they're going into downtown to maybe go to a doctor, seeing somebody in a business, buying a book? Okay. Just, how often are you utilizing, you know, downtown Mercer Island? How many people can find parking within five minutes? Just kind of wanted to get a feel for that. I have a little different perspective. I have no financial gain for downtown Mercer Island to be larger. The financial gain maybe is I might have some more clients. I do see some new businesses coming into town. I don't know, I'm rather curious about the multiplier effect. How many people would you have in three-story facilities or rooms or condos or apartments versus five stories? I'd like to know that. You know, how much more money for people having rent here are they going to bring to the community here at large? What is, and I would talk a lot about the impact of parking. Would the developers be willing to do underground parking? I just feel that I would like to see a more vibrant downtown. I would like to see a place where I can stay after doing a walk-around. I would like to see more places like Bennett's. I would like it to be a community of people of all ages, all diversity. I would think it would make more sense for maybe I, as a parent that would like to downsize, to find somebody that, some home that is less than a million dollars. And I'm wondering for all the people here that say they don't want to see development in downtown, what do you do for people like me? Where do I fit into this? Thank you.
Thank you. So, anyone else? Okay, well, thank you very much. This is, as always, another lesson in the articulateness, the thoughtfulness, the passion that residents of our community have, and we certainly, as a Council, appreciate hearing your comments. I'm going to go now to Scott and Steve, and let one of you talk a little bit. I've already mentioned that next week is the time when the Council is going to try and digest all of this, but could one of you talk a little bit about, then beyond that, what's coming, just so the public has a refresher and a clearer idea of what we anticipate coming up?
Sure. Your next scheduled meeting after May 16th is June 6th, so that's when we would intend, so May 16th would be first reading of a number of ordinances related to the town center, code amendments, and your comprehensive plan, which is a bigger piece than just the town center. June 6th is when we would bring second reading to you and ask you to adopt those ordinances. And there will be two ordinances for each item, the code amendment and the comprehensive plan, because you need to adopt some ordinances that take effect prior to the town center moratorium expiring. And then, the second ordinance for each of the code amendments and the comprehensive plan would then take effect after the moratorium expires. So the first ordinance sort of bridges that gap. So we have publication requirements and timeframes after which, you know, like five days after publication, for example, before ordinance takes effect. We'll show all this to you next week, but bottom line is, you would need two ordinances to not have to extend the town center moratorium again for a week or two.
Thank you. And the main point I would want to make to the public is, so at our next meeting, next week, we aren't having a public comment period at the beginning of that meeting, but that is not a meeting at which final votes will be taken by the Council. That's a meeting at which the Council will be giving direction to staff to nail down exactly what we'd like to see. But there certainly will be an opportunity between that meeting and the next meeting for you to comment on that language that's coming out of the Council's direction to staff. So while this is your last comment opportunity before we, public comment opportunity before we dive into this next week, it's not your last public comment opportunity before. we dive into this next week, it's not your last public comment opportunity before the final decisions are made. Okay? With that, we will move on to the added item on our agenda, which is other business planning schedule. And if I could ask, Tom, could you just close the door there so that we can, don't have the noise from outside? Yeah, let folks escape, and then we'll move into that.
Door is unlocked on the chat.
Yeah. All right, now, Tom, you could call that, pull that door closed if it's not. Okay. So, council, the immediate question here is the structuring of the meeting next week. And deputy mayor and city manager and myself had a conversation this afternoon, and what we arrived at is a suggestion for that, that we, because it's, of course, a huge meeting, just to get through the town center stuff, and we do have some other, Steve, maybe you could just read off the other topics that are on our calendar that night.
Sure, I can do that. There are a couple of proclamations. I wouldn't expect them to take a considerable amount of time. Kids' Parks Day and also Affordable Housing Proclamations. We will be receiving, the council will be receiving the Arts Council's annual report and work plan, which is currently scheduled to be in your consent calendar, so again...
Which, which might get pulled, you know, tomorrow, it could be pulled.
Thank you, Ally. And then we get into the media portion of the agenda. We will, we do expect to be bringing to you our Development Cost of Service Study and Development Fee Resolution, which is tied to our funding of the long-range planning position, so we would like to make sure we get that in front of the city council. And also the First Quarter of 2016 Financial Status Report and Budget Adjustments, which I don't expect will take a considerable amount of time. But then we have the Town Center Vision and Development Code Update and Periodic Comprehensive Plan Update, which we've been talking about. And we do want to have as much time as possible for council to work on those two issues. And then finally, we do expect to have an executive session as well.
All right, and that executive, I think I can...
The meeting, the meeting now.
We have thought about that.
That executive, I think I can just say that executive session's regarding the city manager hiring, so we expect that to take some time as well. So here's the suggestion. The suggestion is that we start at five o'clock and that we cover the non-town center issues first to move them out of the way, and then go directly, when we can, into town center and put the executive session on the end of the meeting. So what I'm looking for is, council, does that sound okay with you? Would that work with regards to your schedule, or do you want to propose something else? This is my suggestion, but happy to go a different direction if that doesn't work or you've got a different idea.
There are no items that we could push out?
Just because it seems like a monster.
It is.
Oh.
The items that we could reasonably push out are the ones that really don't have a significant time associated with them, at least in our judgment. The Development Cost of Service Study, I think, is important to get that done because of its implications for funding of the position that we hope to start fairly soon. And First Quarter Financial Status Report and Budget Adjustment, that is something that does have to get done. Right now, the finance director is anticipating that's only about a fifteen-minute item as well, so we probably don't save a lot by pushing that out. And he was eager to get that done. So I guess that's a long-winded way of saying probably not a lot to be gained by moving the items that potentially could be moved.
Thoughts? I hear tremendous enthusiasm for this. That's it.
This is a question, even though it sounds like fifteen minutes is still fifteen minutes, is this something that's really, or gentle, can actually be pushed until after June sixth or whatever?
I could circle back with the finance director tomorrow, and if it was the council's sense that, that if that could be moved without having a significant impact, we can ask and see if that could be done.
There is a meeting that Saturday as well, so technically we can take action if we had to on non-controversial item like that on Saturday.
June eleventh.
Yeah.
There's an ordinance attached to that, so that has to be done.
I'm saying, it's still a meeting, and we can do anything we want in the meeting as long as we notice that we're going to do something.
We'd have to make that a regular meeting.
And I think that, you know, the reason that the finance director had wanted it to be on this meeting was that the next two meetings are also very full, and so we're trying to balance them all out.
We could look at that. I'd want to make sure we didn't have any concerns with regard to the recording and so forth. We can do that.
No.
Well, yeah, if we have it at the community center, we don't have any way to record except with the small recorder, which is not the best quality, but I don't know if that really affects being able to actually adopt anything at that time. I don't think that matters.
I'm a little bit more concerned about the fact that we're doing a double town center ordinance for covering the two-week gap period. And just would ask staff, if that's really what's going on, instead of Scott and Kerry spending their time coming up with a whole new whole ordinance that will cover two weeks to just do a two-week extension of the moratorium to just cover your gap, which would take the one paragraph resolution. Because presumably what you're doing for that two weeks is freezing development anyway with this interim thing.
The interim ordinance, you would actually be adopting the new town center regulations for those week or two time period, and then that would go away, and the same exact regulations would then take effect in what I would call the permanent ordinance.
Okay, as long as it's, as long as you're not doing the whole different code.
Yeah, it's not, it's a very small amount of work.
The code is attached as an exhibit to either version, and so it's not significantly more work whether we do it that way or just extend the moratorium.
Sure, okay, if that's the case, great.
If I hear the sense of the council is that, let's take a look at doing whatever we can to move the First Quarter Financial Report and Budget Adjustment, we'll check into that and...
Chip did preview that to us by saying that he believes it's a pretty short presentation, so he didn't think there was much in that that was going to rise to the level of council conversation, so...
What happens, as it always happens, is the last thing on the agenda, we're all exhausted.
Well, we're proposing to put that up front and get that, knock those things off right up front. Okay. I hear grudging dismay is maybe the tenor here, so...
It strikes me, the bigger challenge is how we deal with the town center stuff and how that's organized, because it has got to be a very structured discussion if we're going to get through all this. And we can't, people, and that's critical as to what staff sends out, how we have a decision document that we all understand how it's going to work, we're not just jumping all over the place, and just can, people know when they come into the meeting what questions are going to be asked and have to be answered.
Agreed. Agreed. Okay, so we'll take a look at the financials, but other than that, does five o'clock work? Let me just ask that specific question in terms of your calendar. Can you make that work? Okay. All right. So that's the plan?
Absolutely.
That's the plan, thank you very much. Anything else with regards to that or planning schedule in other respects?
Just to follow up to what I just said, so I just encourage, all of us, if you've got any issue that you want the council to say yea or nay on, please get that to Scott by tomorrow, because he's got to get an agenda bell out to us, you know, it's got to be finished by Wednesday and out to us by Thursday and out to the public. So it's just, I think it's really important that, based upon tonight's testimony, based upon everything else we're getting, everything you've seen, everything you've all read, if you've got issues that you really want Scott to get on the agenda, we've got to get it now.
Okay. All right, with that, if there's nothing else, I'm seeing here, and we are adjourned. Thank you.